Excellencies, distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, I hereby declare open the 24th meeting of the 29th session of the Human Rights Council. Before we continue with the interactive dialogue with the Commission of Inquiry, I would like to remind you that the deadline for submission of draft proposals has been set for Thursday, 25th of June at 1:00 p.m. Thursday, 25th of June at 1:00 p.m. In this connection, I wish to reiterate that the late submission of draft resolutions, as well as many revisions or amendments, makes it difficult for many delegations, especially small ones, to keep up with the work pace and stay abreast of developments. Late submission of draft proposals also complicates the work of the Secretariat and Conference Services to ensure that all texts in all languages and PBI's are available on time. Therefore, I would strongly urge all sponsors to submit draft proposals by the deadline and would remind them of the call made by the President on the first day of this session that they should refrain from seeking the Council’s approval for an extension of the deadline. I would also like to inform you that at 2:45 p.m. this afternoon, His Excellency Mr. Polino Unango, Minister of Justice of the Republic of South Sudan, will address the Having said so, we shall now continue our interactive dialogue with the Commission of Inquiry to investigate all our last human rights violations in Eritrea. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Norway. You have the floor.
The Vice President, Norway is deeply concerned by the human rights situation in Eritrea. We welcome the report of the COI and its focus on arbitrary deprivation of lives and forced appearances, torture, unlawful detention, sexual violence, and forced labor through an indefinite national service. This is a serious of great concern. The serious human rights situation has contributed to the exodus we have seen in past years out of Eritrea amounting to between 2,000 and 4,000 persons every month. The recommendations from the Special Rapporteur’s report last year still stand as the government of Eritrea is not demonstrating any willingness to act upon them. We call on Eritrea to cooperate with the COI and the Special Rapporteur and to work with them to implement the recommendations contained in the reports of the COI and the Special Rapporteur. For the benefit of the government of Eritrea and its people, we would support an extension of the COI’s mandate to investigate the extent to which the human rights violations and abuses identified by the Commission in its first report constitute crimes against humanity. We have noted some positive stated intentions with regard to the indefinite national service that Eritrea has practiced it. The government of Norway has the last months received clear statements from top officials confirming that indefinite national service from the enrollment year patch of October 2014 will start to face demobilization back to the statutory 18-month service. This would mean that next summer, thousands of Eritreans should be demobilized from the Eritrean army. Norway urges the government of Eritrea to ensure that this be implemented and would like to get a comment on this from delegation of the government of Eritrea. I thank you.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Croatia. You have the floor.
Mr. Vice President, Croatia aligns to the EU statement, “We welcome the report of the Commission of Inquiry and thank its members for their work.” Croatia expresses its deep concern regarding the situation of human rights in Eritrea and condemns all human rights violations occurring in the country. The findings in the Commission’s report provide serious indications that the government has created a repressive system to control, silence, and isolate citizens thus depriving them of their human rights and freedoms. Moreover, we are shocked by the findings of the Commission that there is no law that rules Eritreans but fear what speaks for itself, especially in the situation in which there are no parliament meetings, no free elections, and the judiciary is not independent but controlled by the executive power. Mr. Vice President, given the fact that such a situation is not sustainable and prevents any chance for democracy, Croatia fully supports the Commission’s recommendations as well as a close collaboration between the Special Rapporteur and the Commission. At the same time, we call on the Eritrean authorities to establish open cooperation with all relevant international mechanisms and to permit them an access to the country as well as to implement the UPR recommendations. Finally, we would like to use this opportunity and ask the Commission, what is the impact of indefinite national service on the security of citizens and their ability to work as well as on the organization of everyday family life? Two, to what extent this practice negatively affects children, especially girls, and what kind of consequences it carries? And three, what kind of measures could be proposed to combat harmful practices such as child forced marriage and female genital mutilation? Thank you.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Republic of Korea. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Republic of Korea welcomes a report presented by the Commission of Inquiry on the human rights situation in Eritrea and highly appreciates the hard work of the COI which has carried out in spite of a lack of access to the country concerned and as well as the absence of reliable data, including statistical information. The extensive and detailed accounts in the Commission’s report provide concrete and undeniable evidence to the great human rights situation in the country ranging from the lack of civil and political rights to rule by fear and abuse, exploitation, and enslavement. We take note with great concern of the conclusion by the Commission that systematic, widespread, and gross human rights violations have been taking place in Eritrea and that those violations may constitute crimes against humanity. In addition, the fact that there is no accountability on these issues is especially troubling. Along these lines, we urge that the government to take immediate steps to hold all such violations and to take careful and serious attention in implementing all recommendations of the Commission. Specifically among others, we urge the government to fully implement the Constitution of 1997 without further delay. We also regret that the government of Eritrea refused to cooperate with the COI and other human rights mechanisms. We would like to strongly encourage the government of Eritrea to enhance cooperation with all human rights mechanisms and thus to take substantive reform measures to improve the lives of its own people. The Republic of Korea believes that the international community has a responsibility to consider and take measures to address human rights violations in Eritrea, including steps to ensure accountability. In this regard, I would like to hear the views of the Chair of the COI, how the international community can best address the ongoing violations of human rights in Eritrea. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Spain. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, sir. My delegation aligns itself with the statement made by the European Union. We would like to thank the Commission of Inquiry for having presented its report on Eritrea. The description of the situation and the conclusions of the report are resounding. The list of human rights violations and crimes against humanity is extensive. Impunity and the complete lack of the rule of law are a cause of deep concern to us. Our thoughts and solidarity are with the people of Eritrea living in the diaspora and who are living subjected to terror and deprived of their fundamental rights and political rights in Eritrea. Of the recommendations in the report, we would highlight those relating to the need to guarantee an independent judicial system to improve the conditions of persons in detention or imprisonment and to eradicate the practice of torture, to promote the rights of women and children, and on the request of the Commission of the Inquiry to the ILO, to investigate the extensive situation of forced labor. We share with the Commission the deep concern for the victims of criminal trafficking networks and the conviction that combating these is vital, and to do this, we require cooperation amongst states. We regret the lack of access to the country in order to develop the task at hand, and we would urge the government of Eritrea to permit entry to the country and to take into account the recommendations made. We take note of the Commission’s need to conclude its work through the subsequent extension of the mandate and partial modification of the terms of reference. Regarding this, we would like to ask the Commission which aspects of the report need to be supplemented most urgently through cooperation with the government of Eritrea, including authorization to enter the country. Thank you.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela. You have the floor.
Thank you, Vice President. As a position of principle, Venezuela does not support initiatives aimed specifically at developing countries, and all the more so when these mandates do not enjoy the acquiescence of the state concerned. We have denounced the fact that with mandates like these, the Council is being used as a tool by sovereign countries, and this does not contribute to improving the human rights situation on the ground. These initiatives violate the principles of respect for integrity, sovereignty, and non-interference in domestic affairs of countries enshrined in the UN Charter. Once again, sir, we would reiterate the vital need for this Council to comply with its mandate to promote and protect human rights on the basis of genuine dialogue and cooperation with strict observance of the principle of universality and without resorting to coercion, selectivity, double standards, and politicization through the imposition of specific country mandates. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom, of Great Britain, and Northern Ireland. You have the floor.
Mr. President, the UK thanks the Commission of Inquiry for its report. We share the Commission’s deep concerns regarding human rights in Eritrea, in particular widespread arbitrary detention and shortcomings in the rule of law and respect for fundamental freedoms. We regularly raise human rights concerns with the Eritrean government through our bilateral engagement and with our EU partners. We recognize the work of the Commission and regret the government of Eritrea’s failure to receive the Commission in Asmara. This compelled the Commission to rely on witnesses who are outside the country and whose testimony is, in many cases, based on firsthand experience of Eritrea some time ago. Analysis of the likely times of the most serious violations and abuses would have been helpful in clarifying trends and the prevailing situation. We recognize that Eritrea continues to fall short of domestic implementation of its international human rights obligations. We call on Eritrea to honor these obligations through discussions under the UN Universal Periodic Review as well as the EU Article 8 Dialogue. We note that Eritrea participated in the UPR process and ratified the Convention Against Torture and Other Cruel Inhuman or Degraded Treatment or Punishment in September 2014. We now call on the government to follow through on these commitments with concrete action to improve the human rights situation on the ground, particularly the commitment to limit national service to 18 months. We also urge the government to implement its constitution, to release all those arbitrarily detained, and to hold those responsible for violations and abuses to account. The UK would be interested to learn if members of the Commission will look at human rights abuses suffered by Eritrean nationals at the hands of traffickers on the borders of Eritrea and neighboring countries. Thank you.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Switzerland. You have the floor.
Sir, Switzerland thanks the Commission of Inquiry in Eritrea for its substantive report and exhaustive work. The report confirms a disturbing picture of the situation in Eritrea. We deeply regret that the government didn’t allow the Commission to enter the country and didn’t respond to requests for information, which would have been necessary to have a complete picture of the situation in the country. A question to the members of the Commission, you describe systematic massive violations of human rights in Eritrea in your report, which may be in some ways crimes against humanity. Switzerland is particularly concerned at extrajudicial executions, forced disappearances, arbitrary detention, and the conditions of detention, including torture and inhuman treatment, and which spare neither women nor children. We’re also concerned by the indefinite national service and gender-based violence, particularly against women and children and girls, widespread in military service. Furthermore, we deplore the monitoring of the whole of society by an enormous security system, giving rise to a climate of fear amongst the large, major part of the population, the consequence being major restrictions on freedom of expression, freedom of peaceful assembly and association. Your report describes the lack of accountability and thus a lack of the rule of law, which makes it very difficult to bring to book those responsible for these violations. Given the many grave violations of human rights which you’ve documented and given the current conditions for the Commission to work in, how do you see the future of the Commission of Inquiry and continuing the work you’ve carried out already? What specific measures can the international community consider to encourage the Eritrean government to respect and guarantee human rights in the country? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Sudan. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. My delegation would like to make the following remarks. Sudan encourages this August Council to conduct its work in full accordance with the guided principle of work as stipulated in document file/1 and to avoid any trend of politicization, selectivity, and impartiality. Two, Sudan remains confident that the consent and cooperation between the mandate holder and the concerned country represent the sole alternative to achieving tangible progress on the ground and that no positive result could be achieved in the absence of dialogue and mutual respect. In this regard, my delegation considers to satisfaction the recommendation that support and technical assistance should be provided to Eritrea to implement the recommendation of the Universal Periodic Review and other human rights mechanisms. Sir, three, Sudan considers that the UPR provides an appropriate framework to enhance the international cooperation in the field of human rights where all states are treated on equal footing and strongly rejects the utilization of this August Council, in particular the special procedure mechanism to achieve political goals and objectives. Four, my delegation encourages Eritrea to continue its engagement with the international community and its effort to promote the situation of human rights. To conclude, Mr. President, I would like to raise the following question. Eritrea is a young developing state which has been under sanctions for more than a decade. To what extent can sanction hinder the full enjoyment of the right to development of the people of Eritrea and furthermore represent a direct violation to the right to development? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran. You have the floor.
Mr. Vice President, we are of the firm belief that the promotion and protection of human rights should be based on the principles of cooperation and genuine dialogue and be aimed at strengthening the capacity of member states to comply with their human rights obligations and commitments. We maintain also that the practice of selective approaches in the Human Rights Council is a tool that exploits human rights for political purposes, breach the principles of universality, objectivity, and non-selectivity in addressing human rights issues, and undermine cooperation as the essential principle to effectively promote and protect all universally recognized human rights for all. In this connection, we reiterate that the Human Rights Council should engage the country concerned in a constructive manner and contribute to the improvement of human rights situation on the ground as well as the peace and stability in the region. Thank you.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Luxembourg. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. We associate ourselves with a statement made by the European Union. My delegation would like to thank the members of the Commission of Inquiry for the scale and quality of the work done despite the continued refusal of the Eritrean officials to cooperate. Luxembourg is gravely concerned at the conclusions drawn by the Commission, denouncing as it does the massive systematic violations committed under the authority of the government. Some of these acts might well be crimes against humanity. My delegation is especially shocked to read of reports of extrajudicial executions, torture, gender-based violence inflicted on women and girls during national service, and of forced labor. For want of a constitution, parliamentary assembly, and independent justice, the government has set up a monitoring and supervision system which gravely limits the right to a private life, freedom of movement, and of expression. Given such a dramatic situation, a large number of Eritreans are leaving the country in the search for a better life, taking risky journeys where their rights may well be further exposed to abuse. This large-scale migratory flow shows how important it is to boost cooperation amongst countries of origin, transit, and destination, and to tackle the fundamental causes of migration. Finally, we can also take good note of Eritrea’s ratification of the Convention Against Torture as the beginnings of a commitment to work with the High Commissioner’s Office, a positive development which might constitute the basis for an enhanced commitment to work with the international community. Finally, a question to the Commission, how could we encourage the Eritrean government to effectively take account of the conclusions and recommendations in the report and to cooperate with the various UN machineries? Thank you.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ireland. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ireland aligns itself with the remarks delivered by the European Union and would like to add the following. Ireland welcomes the report from the Commission of Inquiry and would like to thank all members of the Commission here today for the important work they have undertaken since the establishment of the Commission in June last year. We are deeply disturbed that members of the Commission have been subjected to threats and intimidation in the execution of their mandate, including during their time in Geneva as described by the President of the Council yesterday, and we strongly condemn such action. We commend the Commission on the quality of the report. We note that the disturbing evidence presented is based on a painstaking and detailed process of evidence gathering comprising of 550 confidential interviews conducted and 160 written submissions received across eight countries. We appreciate that this has been a sensitive investigation which has been conducted with due regard to issues of gender, culture, and security. The principles underpinning the work of the Commission, independence, impartiality, objectivity, transparency, and integrity, are all evidenced in the report. We also pay tribute to all of those who provided information directly to the Commission, assisting it to discharge its mandate. It is vital that the voices of the victims are heard in this Council. We are disappointed that the government of Eritrea has refused to cooperate with the Commission and permitted access to the country to assess the situation firsthand. We are gravely concerned with the evidence presented on the systematic, widespread, and gross human rights violations that have been and are being committed in Eritrea under the authority of the government. In particular, we are disturbed by the assertion that some of these violations may constitute crimes against humanity and note the call for further investigation. We call on the Eritrean government to respect their international human rights obligations, acknowledge the existence of these violations, and take steps to ensure accountability for crimes committed. The pervasive control systems imposed in the country are particularly invidious. As the Commission has said, heavy consequences for perceived deviant behaviors, including lifetime incarceration or death, have created an environment of self-censorship whereby individuals no longer trust anyone, not even in their own family. Are there ways in which states and UN mechanisms can follow up on the recent UPR in order to attempt to improve the situation on the ground in Eritrea? We would also like to ask the Commission, could it give its views on how the international community can ensure accountability for human rights violations in Eritrea? Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cuba. You have the floor.
Thank you, President. Cuba firmly believes that international cooperation, dialogue, and respectful exchange among all countries, based on respect for the principles of the United Nations Charter, constitute the most effective path towards achieving the highest standards of promotion and protection of human rights. We believe that all possible measures within the Human Rights Council should be exhausted in order to ensure that matters of concern to the international community are addressed, or matters which may constitute challenges for one or several countries regarding the existence of a propitious environment for the enjoyment of all human rights for all people. We do not believe that either a punitive focus or sanctions can take us any closer to achieving such objectives. We believe that cooperation should be given another chance and that direct involvement of regional and subregional organizations in Africa should assist in seeking solutions to matters which constitute subjects of concern, and that effective solutions should be sought to assist the Eritrean people. Thank you.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Somalia. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Somalia associates itself with a statement made by the Republic of Djibouti. We wish to thank the Commission of Inquiry for the quality of its work, for its patience and persistence in the face of problems encountered during its mandate. We would wish to express our thanks to all those who helped to compile the report. We deeply regret the lack of cooperation shown by the Eritrean authorities with the Commission of Inquiry, as well as systematic and massive human rights violations in the country. We’re particularly concerned at the disastrous effects of these inhuman treatments at the national and international level. The Commission tells us that people have been tortured and killed, that’s an example, but internationally, we are witness to a human tragedy. I’m talking about all of these people dying in the Mediterranean, the men and women who have left their homeland, not by choice but by constraint, dreaming of going to countries where fundamental rights are guaranteed to one and all. As a country which has lived through civil war for more than two decades, we have experienced the fact that everything begins with systematic human rights violations, and in time, this will lead to verbal and physical confrontation between oppressor and oppressed, unwittingly creating an environment for anarchic chaos. We think it’s our responsibility to take all the necessary appropriate measures to ensure that everybody can enjoy fundamental rights worldwide because respect for human dignity has no price or frontier. We also believe that it’s our duty to inform and warn anyone who wishes to tread the path of destruction. For all these reasons, we’ve decided that in this session, we will support the resolution to extend the mandate of the Commission of Inquiry on Eritrea in order to allow the Commission to further deepen its investigations into possible crimes against humanity. We urge the authorities in Eritrea to fully cooperate and to accept the recommendations of the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ethiopia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We thank the Commission of Inquiry for its report and condemn it in the strongest term, any threats, intimidation, again, the Special Rapporteur and the Commissioners. In the statement made yesterday by the representative of Eritrea during the interactive dialogue, he accused Ethiopia of violation of international law by refusing to implement the decision of Ethiopia-Eritrea Border Commission. Let me, Mr. President, set the record straight for the benefit of this august body. Once again, although our position on this issue has been made clear time and again over the years. First, Ethiopia fully accepted the limitation decision of the Boundary Commission and has made all possible attempts to implement the decision in accordance with the internationally accepted practices. Second, Ethiopia has been continuously calling for the peaceful settlement of the issue through dialogue and exerted all efforts to normalize relations with Eritrea. Two years ago, my Prime Minister made unprecedented peace overture to Eritrea by proposing even to go to Asmara to initiate a bilateral dialogue if Eritrea wishes to do so. Even before this, my government has repeatedly announced it publicly and confirmed also to those entrusted third parties that it is ready to start dialogue at any time, place, and level of Eritrea’s choosing. Unfortunately, all these efforts have not produced results by the insinuating position of Eritrea. Obviously, the main problem with Eritrea is not a border problem because almost 80% of African countries’ borders are not demarcated and have also laid Africa into endless conflict because of undemarcated border. It is rather Eritrean’s leadership stubborn stand not to enter into dialogue and use a border dispute as a pretext to perpetrate violations of human rights of its own people. It is also Eritrean’s misguided and destabilizing policy toward the subregion that compelled eager in the African Union member state to request a Security Council to impose two rounds of mandatory sanctions. We believe that boundaries between and among neighbor states should serve as a platform for building bridges of friendship and cooperation rather than a source of endless disputes and conflicts. Nations have neighbors by force of circumstances and not by choice, which impose an obligation on them to live in peace and harmony with their neighbors. Eritrea needs to recognize this fact and that whatever issues it has with Ethiopia must be solved through political dialogue. It must stop using the border issue to violate the human rights of its own people. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Austria. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Austria would like to thank the Commission of Inquiry on the situation of human rights in Eritrea for the report. We note the satisfaction that you implemented your mandate in an independent, transparent, and constructive manner. We deeply regret, however, that the government of Eritrea refuses to collaborate with your mandate and to grant access to the country. Austria is deeply concerned about the systematic and widespread human rights violation detailed in your report, such as extremely harsh prison conditions and incommunicado detention. We are also very concerned about the reported arbitrary arrests and the silencing of journalists through detention and torture. In your report, you state that the human rights violation in the areas of extrajudicial executions, torture, including sexual torture, national service, and forced labor may constitute crimes against humanity. And you recommend the mandate of the relevant special procedure or other And you recommend the mandate of the relevant special procedure or otherwise direct an investigation of the extent to which abuses identified by the Commission constitute crimes against humanity. Kuti Sherbhas further details about the findings on this issue, as well as her views on the way forward. Let me finish by thanking you for your important work, and by calling on the government of Eritrea to abide by the conclusions and recommendations of your report, and engage in an open, constructive dialogue on the human rights situation in the country. I thank you.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of France. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Vice President, members of the Commission of Inquiry, France firmly condemns all threats and acts of intimidation which the Commission had to deal with since its arrival in Geneva. France associated itself with a statement made by the European Union and commends the important job done by the Commission of Inquiry into the human rights situation in Eritrea with more than 500 testimonies. And this is an ambiguous statement about the human rights situation in the country. Despite the refusal of the government of Eritrea to give access to its territory, France yet again regrets the fact that the Eritrean authorities turned down the opportunity for discussion and to submit their viewpoints, which they were afforded by the Commission of Inquiry. In the report, the Commission stresses that grave systematic large-scale human rights violations are committed under the aegis of the Eritrean government. The report unfortunately confirms the assessment already made by the Council that the human rights situation in Eritrea is extremely disturbing. France is particularly concerned at the conclusion in the report whereby some of these violations, in particular extrajudicial executions, torture, including gender-based torture, forced labor, and violations deriving from the practice of indefinite national service, might well constitute crimes against humanity. Additional investigative work indeed seems necessary. The Commission further stresses that the growing number of Eritreans fleeing their country at the risk of their physical integrity and their very lives, more than 5,000 per month according to estimates, is a direct result of the dramatic human rights situation in the country, reminding us of the need to deal sustainably with a migratory crisis and to tackle its deep-lying roots. This can only work properly in cooperation with countries of transit and origin. Sir, France would like to put the following questions to the members of the Commission of Inquiry. You tried to talk with Eritreans who left their country at various times since the country achieved independence. Have you concluded that there have been any changes in the human rights situation and in the scale of violations depending on the time? You recommend that an additional inquiry be conducted to see whether some of the violations you've noted can be qualified as crimes against humanity. What specific priorities do you think there should be for this inquiry? Finally, what recommendations might you make to ensure that those responsible for the violations you speak of answer for their actions in the courts? Thank you.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Estonia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Estonia supports the statement made by the EU and would like to make a few additional comments. We would like to thank the special rapporteur and the Commission of Inquiry for their hard work done and efforts in composing the detailed report which is highlighting the areas of deep concern. We regret the fact that the special rapporteur and the Commission of Inquiry were denied the access to the country to conduct their work despite of their repeated requests. We urge the authorities of Eritrea to cooperate fully with the UN mechanisms, including by allowing access to the country and also to respond positively to all visit requests of special procedure mandate holders. As by report, Eritrea is ruled by a regime which systematically violates the basic human rights of its citizens and has created a climate of fear in which dissent is default and a large proportion of the population is subjected to forced labor and imprisonment, causing involuntary migration. The desperate economic and political situation within the country has caused a lot of its people leaving Eritrea. Therefore, Estonia calls upon the government of Eritrea to respect its obligations under international human rights treaties and thus improve the quality of life in the country. The judicial system in Eritrea lacks independence and the administration of justice remains to be deeply deficient. We call on Eritrea to ensure the independence of the national judicial system and allow laws to be upheld in an impartial and non-political manner. Estonia takes note that Eritrea has ratified the Convention of Torture, thus we urge the government to fully implement the provisions of the Convention. And furthermore, we invite the government to take immediate steps to cease the use of torture and other forms of ill treatment and to improve prison conditions. To conclude, we would like to express our support to further extension of the mandate, and we do hope that the Human Rights Council will find a consensus on this very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. We shall now turn to our list of speakers for national human rights institutions and non-governmental organizations. And I give the floor to Human Rights Watch. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Commission of Inquiry's report substantiates what has long been known about the repression of the Eritrean people. The conclusion that some of the violations may amount to crimes against humanity is deeply worrying, and the Council should support further investigation into these allegations. In recent months, some Eritrean government officials have suggested readiness to implement some policy changes. Officials have told visited immigration officials and some foreign diplomats that it intends to limit national service conscriptions to 18 months for recent conscripts, but not for long-serving ones. Implementation of this pledge would be welcome, but to date, there is no confirmation that any policy change has been enacted, nor that any public notification within Eritrea offers a shift. In fact, very recent research from Human Rights Watch with Eritreans who fled recently, including some conscripted last year, confirms the Commission's finding that there has been no perceptible improvement of the practices of indefinite conscription. On the contrary, our interviews reveal that since 2014, there has been an increased conscription of men previously released from national service, and some of them as old as 75. Some have returned to military training, others given expanded duties in local militias, and others conscripted into the People's Army. The Council should renew the mandate of the special rapporteur and extend the mandate of the Commission to collect most recent information and further determine whether violations in documented amounts to crimes against humanity. It should also demand that the government of Eritrea provide full and unhindered access and implement the Commission's and the Council's previous recommendations. In the absence of substantial human rights reforms verified by the Commission and by other independent human rights monitors, no country should close its door to Eritrean asylum seekers and send them back to almost certain abus. As part of the discussion of how Eritreans may fall victim of traffickers, we recommend that state analyze how Ethiopia's and Sudan's free movement and work restriction on Eritreans leave them with no option to leave the region and head to Libya or the EU in search of protection and sustainable future.
Thank you. I need to interrupt. Thank you very much. And I give the floor to Eastern Horn of Africa Human Rights Defenders Project.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Eastern Horn of Africa Human Rights Defenders Project welcomes the report of the detailed findings of the Commission of Inquiry on human rights situation in Eritrea and reiterates the recommendations made to the government of Eritrea. Mr. President, our organization whose mandate includes Eritrea is deeply concerned by the ongoing widespread and systematic human rights violations that have resulted in thousands of Eritreans fleeing the country for a safer environment in neighboring countries and further afield. The absence of civil society in the country is of also great concern. Eritrea has failed to live up to the international standards despite having ratified many regional and international human rights instruments. We are distressed by the restrictions to the freedom of expression and opinion and of peaceful assembly and association, the impact of which has been heavily felt by the press freedom workers. No independent media exists in the country, and the government silences journalists through detention and torture. Mr. David Isak, like many other journalists, has been held incommunicado detention since 2001, with further concern the Eritrean's lack of cooperation not only with the Commission of Inquiry, but also a special procedure of this council, despite the repeated calls for access and information on the human rights situation. The limited access to the country by any organization including us is really very difficult. Finally, Mr. President, the total disregard of the rule of law is worrisome, and we recall the call for the Commission of Inquiry for the implementation of 1997 Constitution. Eritrea should respect regional and international human rights standards and should be open for the Human Rights Council mandated communications in the country. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to Conscience and Peace Tax International. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We welcome the report of the commissioners and the secretariat for painstakingly piecing together the plethora of human rights violations occurring in Eritrea to establish that the widespread and systematic gross human rights violations could well constitute crimes against humanity. We are pleased to note that accountability for the alleged violations have rightly been accorded to the government and particularly to the president himself, who has ruled Eritrea by decree without any checks and balances since 2002, when he disbanded the parliament following the arrest of his colleagues who sought democratic reforms. We totally agree with the Commission on its findings regarding the forced compulsory and often indefinite national service in Eritrea. We deplore the denial of rights of conscientious objection contrary to international human rights law. We are deeply concerned by the domestic servitude and sexual violence that female conscripts are subjected to and at the hands of senior officials. We condemn the indefinite extension of the 18-month period of service stipulated by Eritrean law. Additionally, we are totally opposed to the militarization of education system and support the recommendation to dissociate secondary school education from military service. The far or the constant and indiscriminate round-up of young people, often using excessive force to catch draft dodgers, is a violation of rights to liberty and security. We welcome recommendations for lawful alternatives. We also welcome recommendations for the government to cease practice of using conscripts as a source of free labor. Mr. President, given the demography of fleeing Eritreans at the rate of 4,000 per month currently is largely made up of young men of conscription age, we believe the forced militarization and unlawful nature of the Eritrean national service is directly linked to the mass exodus. On the two-person diaspora attacks levied against Eritrean nationals residing outside of Eritrea to bolster Eritrea's...
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I give the floor to Jubilee Campaign.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Jubilee Campaign and Christian Solidarity Worldwide thanked the Commission of Inquiry for its comprehensive and detailed documentation of the systematic, extensive, and pervasive human rights violations committed with impunity under the authority of the Eritrean government. These have been ongoing for over two decades. The array of abuses is overwhelming and unremitting, encompassing almost every right outlined in the ICCPR to which Eritrea is party. Violations include large-scale and arbitrary detention, arbitrary deprivation of citizenship, enforced disappearances, extrajudicial killings, the use of conscripts, including the elderly, as forced laborers, underage conscription, the sexual exploitation of female conscripts, routine use of extreme forms of torture, and extortion or imprisonment of family members of absconders. Mr. Vice President, we commend Eritrea's participation in the UPR process, its recent ratification of the Convention against Torture, and its stated aim of implementing several recommendations from its 2014 UPR report relating to freedom of expression, assembly, and religion or belief. However, its continued refusal to engage with key mandate holders is deeply regrettable. We urge the Eritrean government to engage openly and positively with all UN mechanisms, implement the Commission of Inquiry's extensive recommendations, and end the prevailing impunity, implement its 1997 Constitution as a first step towards instituting rule of law, and ensure its practices line up with its international obligations. The violations documented in the Commission of Inquiry report emphasize the importance of the continuation of the special rapporteur and Eritrea's mandate to investigate possible crimes against humanity, and we urge the Human Rights Council to facilitate its renewal. We also urge all signatories to the UN and Africa Refugee Conventions to afford Eritrean refugees and asylum seekers the appropriate protection. The case for such action is both overwhelmingly clear and long overdue. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. I give the floor to International Fellowship of Reconciliation. You have the floor.
The International Fellowship of Reconciliation and Human Rights Concerned Eritrea thanked the Commission of Inquiry on the human rights situation in Eritrea for its report and its extensive work to bring to the Council's attention the human tragedy in Eritrea. Sadly, the Commissioner's report confirms for the word what we in the human rights community have been saying for many years, namely that systematic, widespread, and gross human rights violations are being committed in Eritrea with the complete knowledge and by design of the Eritrean government. Over 700 testimonies were taken by the Commission testifying to the situation. I have personally heard hundreds of others. The thousands of Eritreans fleeing their country, including risking their lives to cross the Mediterranean, are also a horrifying testimony to the situation there. We kindly ask the Commission to recommend action that the civil society and NGOs can take on the basis of the findings in its report. Mr. President, the Council created the Commission of Inquiry by consensus, and we urge you to remain unanimous in responding to its findings. The report makes the particularly chilling claim that some of the documented human rights violations may constitute crimes against humanity, and for that reason, we call for an extension of its mandate to enable further urgent investigations. We agree with the Commission that the mandate of the special rapporteur must be renewed and that further additional measures are taken by this Council and by the Office of the High Commissioner to increase the likelihood that the Eritrean government will implement the report's recommendation. Mr. President, the Eritrean people are crying out for justice. Please do everything in your power to respond to our call. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to Article 19, International Center Against Censorship. You have the floor.
Mr. Vice President, the egregious and systematic violations reported by the Commission of Inquiry on the human rights situation in Eritrea necessitate immediate action and accountability. Eritrea's continued policy of noncooperation with the United Nations, including this Commission, is unacceptable. The isolation and silencing of voices is central to the Eritrean regime's apparatus of repression and ongoing impunity. The perpetual state of emergency sustains a climate where independent voices have all been wiped out. No private media have existed in Eritrea since the last eight private newspapers were forced to close in 2001, when at least 18 journalists and 11 former government officials were arrested on national security grounds. A total of 69 journalists have been arrested and detained without charge or fair trial for exercising their right to freedom of expression since 2001. While eight journalists are reported to have died in detention, a wall of silence means it is impossible to know how many others remain in prison, where they are detained, and information about their well-being. The few remaining media in Eritrea are state-owned and far from independent, serving as a mouthpiece for the Ministry of Information. Alternative sources of news are largely nonexistent due to an extremely low internet penetration level of around 6% and routine blocking of online news sources by Eritrea's sole and government-owned telecommunications provider. Eritrea's legal framework, together with a complete absence of credible or functioning public institutions or an independent judiciary, provides the discretionary means to crush any hint of dissent and sustains impunity for human rights violations. All international and regional actors must insist that accountability for human rights violations defines future engagement with the Eritrean authorities, as steps are identified to secure the institutional and legal reforms necessary to open space for freedom of expression. We reiterate the Commission's recommendation that the government must account for the whereabouts and well-being of political prisoners, including journalists, and allow international and regional observers access to them with a view to securing the unconditional release of those that are still alive. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to Civicus. You have the floor. Civicus?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Civicus and Citizens for Democratic Rights in Eritrea welcome the Commission of Inquiry's landmark report and the Council's stalwart commitment to addressing persistent and grave human rights violations in Eritrea. We recommend the Commission of Inquiry for ensuring an inclusive and comprehensive approach based on hundreds of interviews and written submissions from a diverse range of victims, civil society, and UN stakeholders. However, despite the courageousness of many victims engaged with the Commission of Inquiry, we remain deeply concerned about the very real specter of reprisals against potential witnesses for cooperating with the Commission of Inquiry and members of the Commission of Inquiry themselves. It is incumbent upon all stakeholders to take the necessary measures to ensure that individuals and their families are not subjected to targeted state persecution for engaging with the Commission of Inquiry. Mr. Vice President, the report of the Commission of Inquiry... Mr. Vice President, the report of the Commission of Inquiry presents indisputable evidence of gross human rights violations perpetrated by the government of Eritrea. Systematic restrictions on the rights of freedom of movement, opinion, expression, and religion, and the persistent use of extrajudicial killings, conscription, and forced labor are illustrative of the government's complete and flagrant disregard for human rights and the rule of law. Without recourse to address these issues nationally, thousands of Eritreans would continue to flee the country to escape unchecked and brutal repression. The protracted nature of these violations demands the unflinching attention of the international community. We therefore strongly reiterate our full support for the recommendation put forward by the Commission of Inquiry and further urge the Council to renew the mandate of the Commission of Inquiry to investigate crimes against humanity committed by the state as suggested in the report presented today. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. I give the floor to Amnesty International. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Commission of Inquiry's findings are damning, yet tally with human rights violations that organizations have reported for many years, including arbitrary arrests and incommunicado detention, enforced disappearances, torture, extrajudicial killings, forced labor in indefinite national service, and restrictions on the freedoms of expression and religion. For twenty-two years, the government has systematically crushed any opposition, silenced all dissent, and punished all who refused to conform. Yesterday, the Council heard how even members of the Commission have faced threats and intimidation while in Geneva. Some violations documented by the Commission may amount to crimes against humanity, necessitating further investigations with a view to accountability, including bringing those suspected of criminal responsibility to trial. In addition, with the continued harassment of Eritreans in exile and given that Eritrea continues to deny access to independent human rights monitors, the written and oral testimonies that hundreds of witnesses have shared with the Commission are an invaluable source of evidence that could provide for a basis, could provide a basis for future accountability. Amnesty International urges the Council to ensure follow-up to build on the Commission's findings by strengthening the mandate of the special rapporteur in Eritrea, including through the establishment of a database of human rights violations in Eritrea. We continue to urge Eritrea to cooperate with the special rapporteur and to implement the comprehensive recommendations received during its UPR from other human rights mechanisms, the special rapporteur, and this Commission. Finally, Mr. Vice President, as the Human Rights Commissioner noted, as the High Commissioner noted last week, while paying attention to human rights violations that lie behind the flight of five thousand Eritreans every month, the international community must also continue to provide protection to all those who flee in line with their non-reformer obligations. The human rights situation must remain central to state's assessment of the situation in Eritrea and continue to guide all proposed changes in asylum law and policy. I thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, unfortunately, this was the last speaker I would accommodate at this meeting. I will now give the floor to the country concerned for courtesy final remarks. Eritrea, you have two minutes. Eritrea, you have the floor for two minutes.
Mr. President, my delegation has attentively listened to the interactive dialogue and would like to make the following concluding remarks. We are very thankful of the position of some members to adhere to the fundamental principles and reject the politically motivated mechanisms. My delegation again rejects the baseless allegations made on Eritrea in general. My delegation also has noted Ethiopia's statement, which has been demonstrated in the political bias of the COI. There is no border dispute with Ethiopia, as this has been settled by the final and binding decisions of the delimitation and determination and demarcation endorsed by the Security Council. But Ethiopia continues to occupy sovereign Eritrean territories in defiance to international law and the international ruling. Therefore, Ethiopia should show mutual respect and compliance to international law and vacate occupied Eritrean territories. Eritrea reaffirms that it is committed to the advancement of human rights for its people. Although it did not allow the Commission because of the political nature of its establishment and the subsequent unprofessional conduct of its biased members, it has been seriously engaged in the UPR process as well as bilateral and multilateral actors, including the UN Office of the High Commissioner. In conclusion, Eritrea calls on all member states of the United Nations to reject the report of the Commission of Inquiry, abandon the selective and country-specific resolutions and mechanisms established for Eritrea, and especially and further call upon all states to reject the proposed drafts submitted by Djibouti, acknowledge and express support for the progress that Eritrea is making on its domestic agenda as well as in its regional and international engagement, support the call on the United Nations Security Council to take urgent action to press Ethiopia and its illegal occupation of sovereign Eritrean territories, call on the Security Council to lift without further delay the unjustified sanction which is counterproductive. In a different issue, my delegation has been briefed by the special rapport-
Thank you, Eritrea. Thank you very much. Thank you, Eritrea. Sorry, you exceeded the time by quite a bit. Let me now give the floor to Mr. Mike Smith for his concluding remarks. You have fifteen minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. Thank you for all the delegations who have contributed to this interactive dialogue. I must say that from a personal point of view and as a Commission, we appreciate your contribution, your questions, and the degree of support that has been given to the conclusions that we have reached. There are a number of questions posed by delegations. I'll do my best to respond to those. There were a number that were rather similar, so I won't go through every single one, but deal with them rather collectively. The first question that came up was what are the most urgent steps for the government to take, that is, the government of Eritrea, to address the problems that we've identified? Well, I would say that the most, the single most important thing was a complete change of political will. In other words, a demonstration that the government recognizes that there were these problems and was prepared to address it. So everything else after that couldn't follow. Without a change of political will, it's unlikely that anything much will happen. But assuming that, I think the number-one priority would be to see the adoption or implementation of the constitution. Once that is done, we have a state where a rule of law can apply, where independent judiciary, judicial institutions can operate, where the climate of impunity is challenged, and where individuals who have suffered injustice will have a way to seek a remedy to those injustices. For me, that would be the number-one step to take. The number-two step would be to limit national service genuinely to eighteen months. And linked with that, what that implies is that all of those people, those conscripts who have already served their eighteen months, in some cases, they are still in the military after years, should be demobilized. It's no good simply saying that from the next year or whatever, it will be eighteen months if you still have the injustice of young people who've been taken into the military at the age of seventeen or eighteen, who at the age of thirty are still doing their service. There are, of course, a whole range of other things, but I won't go into all of those. They're covered in the report. Now, there were several questions on what the international community can do to promote these sorts of changes in the country. Well, at one level, there is, of course, the issue of technical assistance. I think one delegation asked about that. I would say that if the government were prepared to, to implement some of the, some of the measures that we have suggested, including the adoption of the constitution, the establishment of an independent judiciary, the release of political prisoners, the demobilization of tens of thousands of people, that there is a lot of technical assistance that could help them go through those measures and ensure that, that they are implemented properly and in a non-disruptive way. The economy, of course, is heavily reliant on, on forced labor, and there would need to be major changes, economic changes, to accommodate that sort of difference. And that's something the international community would be able to help with. But of course, as I said, that would require the government to be prepared to accept that, that technical assistance. Short of that, and in the meantime, we would argue, as we've said in our report, that it is critically important for all countries and the international community to put human rights front, squarely in front of any dialogue or on cooperation and on developing relations, either bilaterally or multilaterally, with Eritrea. The country, the government, must understand that the system that they have set up is simply unacceptable in the modern world and that, that people deserve to get some sort of a relief from that. And countries that are trying to deal with other issues created by that, including the flow of Eritreans out of the country across the Mediterranean, need to bear constantly in mind that the origin of this flow is essentially people's total disappointment in the way in which they live in their country. There was a question about what the main difficulties faced by the COI were. Well, we, of course, the major difficulty was that we were not able to visit the country, visit the places of detention, et cetera. We were not able to get much documentary evidence of aspects that were happening. We had to rely very heavily on the testimony of people who, who had been through the, been through their own experiences. In the way in which we approached this, I would emphasize that we did not simply interview people and say, what do you think of the government? What do you think of the system? That would have simply introduced their own particular political views. The way we did this is, is to say, tell us your story. What happened to you? And when people told those stories, one after another, up to five hundred and fifty or more that we spoke to, there was, every one of those stories is different. Everyone is very personal. But when you put them all together, one on top of each other, you get a picture emerging of a system and a way in which the place is operating that is really consistent. And that picture, if you like, is built up and gives us a, a great deal of confidence that the sorts of conclusions we have reached are in fact correct, even though we were not able to visit the country. There were some questions about mechanisms for accountability. Well, the number-one mechanism for accountability in that country would be a proper independent judicial system in the national space. That is to say, if there was a free and independent judiciary in which people who abuse their authority can be charged and brought up and, and made accountable for their actions, that would be the ideal situation. At the moment, that does not happen, and that does not look particularly likely at the moment. And that's when the international community has to look at other means of trying to bring some accountability to this situation. And that's when issues such as crimes against humanity, international crimes, and so on, arise. Now, I think there was a question as to why we had recommend, we had pointed out there may be crimes against humanity committed, and we recommend that there be further investigation. These are not simple things. We gathered the testimony in the way in which I've, I've, I've said. We heard a lot of stories from a lot of people, and they were so consistent, and there was such a strong body of views, that we strongly suspected that there is indications of crimes against humanity, which is to say, crimes that are being committed at the hands and at the direction of the government. But it's not easy to establish that. That requires quite a lot of additional forensic work and ideally documentary work. So the, we are recommending that somebody look more closely in that field and see if we can establish enough that we, or a body, an appropriate body, could recommend to the Security Council that the Security Council should refer the matter to the International Criminal Court. The issue of trafficking came up several times in the, in the comments made. This was not something that we looked at very closely, because by definition, pretty much trafficking occurs outside the borders, and we were focused on human rights abuses that occurred within Eritrea. But inevitably, when people told their stories, they did give quite horrific accounts of what happened to them when they were moving through, up towards the Mediterranean and so on. And therefore, we believe that it's why we did amongst our recommendations suggest that there is a case for further investigation into this whole issue of the exploitation of Eritrean and doubtless a lot of other people who are moving, seeking asylum in Europe and, and other countries. The sorts of abuses we're talking about are people who are, who are abducted while they're on that, on that journey and who then have their parent, their, their parents or their relatives back in Eritrea. They have the funding extorted from them in order to get their release. They have to pay, sometimes several times, they have to pay ransoms of enormous amounts. It's just a horrific situation that needs to be addressed. There was a question about the national service and what the impact of that was. I won't go into that in great detail. Beyond saying, we've, it's very clear in our report on that, that what this does is it stunts young people's plans, their dreams for the future. Because once they go international service, even the ones who are lucky enough to pass the exam at a high enough level to go on to some sort of other college and do some additional training, they are still required to serve as national service trainees and live on a pittance for years to come. For those who don't, they are put into a military unit where they are forced very often into ordinary labor in building roads or in building construction or in agriculture, living under military discipline and paid almost nothing. It is a, a really serious impact on, on young people, and it's no wonder, therefore, that a lot of them choose to leave. There was a question about the impact, specific impact about women, which I'll, I'll ask Sheila. She has, has studied this rather more because of her work also as special rapporteur, and she'll make a comment on that. And I think the only other comment I will make is that the, we were asked about the priorities for the future activities of the COI. Well, the COI currently finishes as of now, so it would all depend on what happens. And we would, if, if the CIA, COI were, were extended, then we'll have to wait and see. But I imagine it would be focusing very much on that issue that so many of you mentioned and that we mentioned in the, in the report, that is, to look at the accountability issue. Again, I thank everyone for their comments. Sheila?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. I'd like to address a specific question which was put by Croatia as well as Switzerland on the family, on the impact of national service on family life, on women, and also the issue of FGM. First of all, with regards to family life, with the, with the parents out in the national service, which in fact the Commission has identified as forced labor, as well as other institutions have identified as forced labor, the fact is that children grow in a situation where the fabric of the family is distorted, the, the non-presence of the father in the family. Now with regards, or even the mother, depending. Now with regards to girls and women in the, in the national service, they are discriminated against on the basis of their sex and are at extreme risk of sexual violence in both military training camps, which is the first stage of national service in Eritrea, and within the army, the common allocation of national service after the training, they go into the army. In the military training camps and the army, they're subjected to gender-specific exploitation by army, by officers and trainers who select young women and girls to perform domestic duties in their quarters and to seek- in their quarters and to seek, to use the opportunity to sexually abuse the women and girls. The sexual abuse of women and girls in both the military training camps and the army takes place in an overall environment of control, intimidation, and coercion, Mr. Vice President. The national service structure utilizes the military hierarchy in which the subordinates are conditioned to obey and perform the orders of superiors, and failure to follow the orders of superiors can result in severe punishment. Young women are powerless to avoid or defend themselves or to protect themselves from the abusive behaviour of officials. I’d like to talk briefly about other aspects, mindful of the time, the impact of the national service on girls who become invisible in their own communities, in their homes, because they can’t go on to the secondary level after a while, because they don’t want to be subjected to the abuses I have mentioned. So basically, this is the situation. Briefly on FGM, I’d like to commend the government of Eritrea for the law they’ve passed, but I think there is still more to be done in terms of awareness and in terms of other programs with regards to ensuring that girls and women, girls are not subjected to this violation of their rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me thank Mr. Mike Smith and the Commission. Colleagues, this brings us to the end of the interactive dialogue with the Commission of Inquiry on human rights in Eritrea. I wish to thank Mr. Mike Smith and other members of the Commission for their report and participation in this dialogue. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, we shall now have a short break before we begin the interactive dialogue with the Special Rapporteur on the situation of human rights in Eritrea. So we’ll have about a minute or so of a break and change of podium here. Thank you.